We're good to go.
We're, we're good. We're good.
Good evening. Hello, everybody. I think we're ready to get started. It's 5:30. That's our announced time. For those who don't know me, I'm Jeff Bellamy. I'm the attorney for Center Township. My background, and for those that haven't had the chance to work with me, I represent numerous townships, local units, territories, the privilege of working with Lurie Township, or San Fisbro Fire, work with Avon, and others in the county, and then I work on territory and fire, fire district matters, really, kind of all over the state, Argus, to Bluffman, all the way down to Frenchleg. I've been in private practice 21 years, and have the privilege of having worked with the township for several years. And what I've been asked to do is help our two participants tonight present to you tonight, and in our other hearings, the format for considering a formal creation of a fire territory between Center Township and the town of Danville. Historically, the two units have always collaborated in some fashion, and really, in a lot of ways, have functioned as an informal partnership or a contractual partnership. Now they're looking to use the structures of the code to consider doing that more formally in the territory. This is the first of three required public hearings if any two units want to consider creating a territory. And our next session would be February 19th. That's going to be over at the Town Hall. The next hearing would be March 5th, back here at the Royal. And then meeting four, I distinguish hearing versus meeting, meeting four will be back over at the Town Hall on March 19th. You may have seen the QR code, for those that are technically adept. And if you click that QR code, the materials that are going to be reviewed tonight, or just other materials beyond that, are available for you to pull down and review on your own. And if you have problems with the QR code, we can take an email from you, and we'll have someone get those out to you if you want to view those away from the meeting. So, this is a joint hearing of the two groups. And so if the two groups would permit me, just to check that, Mr. Carter, do we have a quorum of the Town Council?
Yes.
Mr. Carter confirms we have a quorum of the Town Council, pass seat. We have a quorum of the, Ms. Brand, we have a quorum of the Center Township Board. So unless either of you object, we should call the joint hearing to order. The record reflects everyone's nodding vigorously, get going. So, we've called our meeting to order, and so I want to just start kind of emceeing a little bit, just to give everybody some context of what we want to try and do, and accomplish, and giving you some groundwork. So what's a territory to start with? When I first started doing the work years ago, where territory and district would both kind of tumble out of your mouth the same, and they're not the same, and I still kind of recoil and have to correct that they're not the same. The Indian Code permits for a territory, local units to enter into a contract called an interlocal agreement, to jointly provide and administer fire and EMS together rather than as individual units. And right now, we're operating on some kind of ongoing contractual relationship, but we're looking to formalize that and use some of the governance structure of the territory code, and also to allow reconsidering the way some of the tax levy is dealt with. We have the REE Financial Group with us here that's going to talk in greater depth about that aspect. It's not a fire district, so we kind of distinguish this from a fire district. A fire district can be created by the county commissioners or a landowner petition. I think it'd be kind of hard in some areas now to do a landowner petition anymore, because that code's kind of older, and our populations have grown, and it would be harder to collect those signatures, but it could happen. And what happens is, if the commissioners were to hear that information and decide on their own to do a fire district, they functionally, and I don't want to be polite, but they functionally remove the township's fire and EMS authority, and the town's fire and EMS authority, and try to find three to five individuals to decide what's best for everyone. And if it works, great. And if you don't like it, well, you have to agree that to your commissioners, and they may or may not, may or may not do any more about that. The district runs as its own subunit of government, though, and you have no direct vote. You have no direct means to go and make your, make your issues known to your elected representative. I think those that are performing these choices between districts and territory, can't speak for your aid, but in my experience of the few dozen I've dealt with, probably prefer the ongoing local collaboration and the ongoing local control of the units that are here hearing about this. So this process tonight, is, tonight and the next three hearings, is to present residents and others of the boards themselves about the need and the impact of collaboration between the two units on fire and EMS, making sure that the services are provided equitably, and increasing reliability, improving outcomes for patients, including outcomes for property owners, and making sure safe operations for the men and women that work for, or might work for, the department in the future. As I noted, you're going to be locally controlled by the two participants if you agree to do this. Wouldn't be operated by the county, wouldn't be operated by the state, it would be operated by a joint executive board that the two units decide who would serve on it, with input and technical advice from the Fire Department Administration, and they would be responsible for all first response, including fire EMS, equipment planning, debts, bonds, education, community outreach, code inspection, enforcement, department personnel discipline, fundraising, grants, and real estate planning. Basically, a little bit like what you might see in the town, where the Board of Public Works deals with public works matters, you're now going to have some subject matter specialists and some subject matter experts growing in the area of fire. So our direction for these hearings is, we have our citizens and council and township Board members, you're going to hear two main presentations. And our first is going to be presented by Fire Chief Rick Duncan, on the right, and his staff concerning really, what's going on in the fire service right now, what are the needs of the fire service, what are we experiencing, cost of apparatus, page of apparatus, equipment planning, real estate planning, things like that. And what are the expected outcome goals, where do we want to land with the fire department? And then the second presentation are going to be from Nicky Bell, REE Financial Group, and concerning the property tax impacts, the forecasted impacts, the levies and items. And they will present that material. You may ask, you know, why are we presenting these specific items and these items only? It's what the code requires. The code on the territory says that these are the two types of presentations that will be presented and immediately made public. Is this Act One of a three act play? Will we be hearing, you know, an opening, and then the middle passage, and then the third passage at the third hearing? No, you're going to hear the same show three times. So unfortunately, for you, eight, you will hear the same material over and over and over, but this allows three opportunities and two venues for folks to come and hear the same, pretty much same material each time. Will we make any decisions tonight? Not publicly. I don't know what information that they will all take in their mind from having heard this, but this will be kind of an anticlimactic public hearing. We will present this information, we will do some Q and A afterward, and then we'll go home. And that will be what happens all three times until we get to the fourth session. And that's why I distinguish these as public hearings versus a public meeting. For the board and council members that are here at that last session in March, that will be an opportunity where we will not put on the REE Financial Report. We will not put on chief's report, but you can ask any of us questions. You can make comment back and forth to each other. You can just make public comment, or if everyone feels well informed on the issues, make a motion and decide whether or not you wish to go forward to do this. We won't, however, be doing Q and A. We won't be, however, doing the public hearing. We've done three public hearings at that point. So, after, after we get through that process, we'll know at the end of March, if you eight want to go forward in doing this, and then it will be in our hands to assemble this and ask the BLGF if they think that all the steps have been met, and they want to do the modified levy. So, we are required to make sure we get this information out and presented. We will do questions at the end, and happy to do the questions at the end. If you want to sign, if you use the QR code that we noted, if you want to pull the materials down. And I think there is even a sign up sheet to speak from the gentleman when you came in, and so we'll try to give everybody an opportunity to do that. And if you think of something after, you can always shoot an email into the fire department or whatever, we'll try and get you the information you want to know. So, with that, I want to hand this meeting over to our Fire Chief, Rick Duncan. You want this in, though?
Thanks, Jeff. First and foremost, I want to address an issue we, I'll take the plea before, to be honest with you, I didn't look at the last draft. But in the public notice for the hearing, the very last line, unit shares of levy based on net assist value versus Danville Town and Center Township, somehow those got flipped between that version and what hit the paper. And we're going to reprint that. It's not a requirement legally to even put that in there. We just wanted to be as transparent as possible to the public, so that they had all the information. And the total is correct. So I'm Rick Duncan. I'm your fire chief. Those of you that don't know me, I'm extremely passionate about this job. So to do you a favor, I prepared a statement that I will read, and then we'll have to do it afterwards, but I don't want to get off track, and we need to get to business stuff, okay? "Good evening. I stand before you tonight to highlight an urgent issue facing Center Township and the town of Danville. The critical need for additional firefighters in our fire department. When I took this job 18 months ago, our fire department was already critically behind. Our community has grown at an average of 9% in the last three years, and the fire department has not. In the proposed 2025 budget, we are unable to secure the funding necessary to expand our firefighter workforce, and this is jeopardizing the safety of our community. We have an aging fleet. We currently operate seven vehicles that are well, well past their lifespan, and that presents an additional safety issue. Without these additional resources, our fire department will continue to brown out Station 191, meaning that during times of high demand, the station will be forced to close temporarily due to insufficient personnel. This is not just a logistical challenge, it's a matter of life and death. As our community grows, so do the demands placed on our fire service. We rely on our firefighters to be there in a moment of the greatest need, whether it's fighting fire, responding to emergency medical calls, or protecting our property and lives. Without proper funding for additional staff, we're putting the safety of everyone in this community at risk. I urge you to recognize the gravity of this situation. The well-being of Center Township and the town of Danville depends on a fully staffed, capable fire department, and the only financial solution to this is a fire territory. We cannot afford to leave our stations, our firefighters, and our community vulnerable. It is time to invest in our future, ensure the protection of our families, and provide our dedicated firefighters with the support they deserve. Once again, I'm honored to be your chief. Thank you." Deputy Chief Brand.
Good evening. Everybody hear me okay? I never hear anybody say no. I can't hear you. So, I have one of those voices. I'm Alex Brand, Deputy Chief of Operations. I've only been with Danville a little over 60 days, but in that 60 days, I've put in hundreds of hours of research, data collection, spoken with contractors, spoken with apparatus manufacturers, spoken with several people about building and, about building and growing our community as in the fire department. So we're talking about resources, we're going to talk about fire service history. Nobody likes history class, right? This guy does. But there's a reason, there's a coalition to it. So 1949 is the first documented incident in our fire department. It wasn't called Danville, it wasn't called Center Township, it was our fire department, right? We didn't, we weren't established back then. So it was this land. 1969, the fire department was established. Our first chief warden, also known as a chief now, was appointed. And then 1900, Danville went out and purchased a hose cart. This hose cart had 400 feet of hose on there. And why did they call it a hose cart? Because it was before we're strong. It was the cheaper way of doing things, right? So they purchased this cart. You might have seen it before. Men showed up to the firehouse, they grabbed the cart, they wheeled it to the water supply. Why did they call it a run? Because they picked up the thing, the cart, and they ran with it. What do we call it today when we get an incident? We call it a run. History never changes. In 1913, we bought a Model T truck, one of the first motorized vehicles, had 250 gallon soda ash chemical tanks. In 1938, we had 138 people show up for a meeting that says, I'm going to sign a petition so these guys can spend $3,000 and purchase a new fire truck. Stand by, you're getting ready to result. In 1953, we purchased one more new pumper. That pumper was purchased for $17,000. $6,500 of that was sponsored by the state. Unfortunately, that program is no longer available. So the difference between that in 15 years is $14,000. When I talk about history, we're going to see history a little bit later in the slideshow. Today, to me, we're continuing to make history. This is the next step, this is the next movement in the fire territory, that we can bring it all together and continue to operate and function efficiently. Operational readiness. With the decrease in number of volunteers in the fire service, we don't call them volunteers, we call them paid on calls. They do get paid, they get paid a lot, but however, of 17 people on the roster, very few of those actually come in and work the overtime, or work the time, if you will. I don't want to say it's here, here, let me back up a little bit. It's a, it's not a consistent basis. I can't say every third day, this individual's going to come in and work. On every Tuesday, this individual's going to come in to work. So it's very inconsistent. That was the word I was looking for. So with this, we want to move forward. In 2020, the volunteer side, we're in the National Volunteer Association, they reached a new low, and actually, the runs tripled in responses. The additional full-time gap, this is what we're requiring, and I'm going to be requesting of this territory. Because of the lack of funding in apparatus replacement, this is where we're going to go to next. I'm not going to bore you with this. This part is a two in, two out, it's an OSHA mandate. OSHA mandate says basically, and right there's your OSHA policy, two in, two out. For every two firefighters we send into a structure, I need to have two people outside with air protection, ready to go in, in the event an emergency happens. So we already know now, we're doing math as well, right? That's four people. It's automatic. The rest of the current protection standard, again, requires this in the event of an emergency. There's something that's super important, and you don't care about it, it's in your packets, it's on the QR code, and if you ever get bored tonight, sit back and take a read. It's NFPA 1710. 1710, I want to reiterate, is a minimum standard. It's not a maximum standard, it's the absolute minimum for our people. Staffing requirements require trained apparatus and trained firefighters within eight minutes to be on the scene of a fire. Due to geographical isolations, a minimum of five on duty is going to take this. This standard's going to set the minimums and criteria for any sort of effective emergency operations. As we continue, it requires four person, four personnel on each piece of apparatus. So a fire truck, anything that's going to be an engine, a ladder, those are things, and we'll talk about those a little bit more in depth here. Currently, right now, we have six full-time staffing. As of 2024, data analysis is eight minutes and 56 seconds. I know the council gets this report every single month, or, I'm sorry, every two weeks, and then you get a monthly one as well. So the data right now, wherever we set, our average response time is eight minutes and 56 seconds. To me, as an operations chief, that is unacceptable. Functional positions on a fire ground, I'm going to give you a little fire 101 really quick. So your initial piece is going to be your incident commander. This is the first person that shows up, or typically a person that's going to run the incident. They're in charge of getting resources, getting apparatus in. They're going to be the ones that delegate the charge, they're going to take command. They're responsible for every person and every piece that shows up on that fire ground. After that, you have an engine. A fire engine is what we all call fire engines, but there's actually an engine and a ladder. A fire engine's the piece of apparatus that carries the water, they carry the hose. They're the ones that's going to go in and extinguish the fire. So currently, if you only have three people, you're already short, because somebody has to run that fire engine. Now that only leaves me two people. We have 200 feet of pre-connect cross legs, 200 feet of hose. That's not easy to move with one. It's even not easier to move when the weather is minus four, or it's 104. So having that extra person shows statistically and with data, through the Indiana Fire Chiefs, the International Association of Fire Chiefs, the IAFF, the International Association of Firefighters, all the data shows that fourth person helps immensely when moving fire roads. The first ladder, ladder truck is exactly what we have, and we have one right now in Danville. We're going to show you the age of that. The ladder truck typically will have four people as well. You're going to have an operator, they're going to carry a ladder around to the backside, secure our utilities, because it's important if the house is on fire to shut off the gas and turn the electric off, because we don't want it blow up, and we don't want to get electrocuted. The interior crew, the most important job, they're our search and rescue crew. No structure goes unsearched until we say, they come out and say, everybody's out of the house. Until we say everybody's out of the house, we always do a search. The second engine, again, a second water supply, a backup line to protect in the initial firefighter's heat rest in case fire down behind them, and then a backup ozone, that's exactly what we're doing. And then our medic unit is obviously there for our citizens or ourselves in the event something happens. So those are all basic fire ground functions. So we talk about deployment of forces. When we start looking at our deployment of forces on our fire ground, here's the goals that we have reached and numbers we have set. So in 2025, we're looking at 8, 26, 11, 27, 14, 28, 17, and 29, 19. I'm not standing here before you to say, I need 19 people right now today. It's not efficient, it's not effective. I understand. It takes time. But there are reasonable numbers that we can put together to come up and move forward with our operations. Strategic forecast shows right now, one firefighter per thousand. So with a population, that's 1.87 per shift. When we start looking at our population, we're well behind. Moving on, we're going to talk about capital improvements. So apparatus, engines, primary engines for 10 years, then they go into reserve for five years and replacement. There's a reason behind these numbers. When you use a primary piece, that's the piece that's used every single day. Once you get past that 10-year mark and multiple miles, then it starts becoming a maintenance nightmare. Example, an engine goes in for a routine oil change, routine maintenance, comes out $20,000 later because they found a brake problem, a front end alignment problem, a broken part. So now your apparatus starts to get more and more. Ladder's a 15-year with a five-year, a tanker's a 15-year piece. A grass truck, which is just a truck that we drive over, those are easy. Those are just standard vehicles. They don't do a lot of runs, just like the tanker. And then a medic truck. A medic trucks are, I don't want to use it loosely, they're disposable. You use them for five years. They get a lot of use, they get a lot of mileage, they're going from zero to 100 all the time, right? They're constantly one of our busiest pieces. So then you use those for five years, you put them in reserve for five years, and then you replace. You're like, chief, well, that seems like it's expensive. It is expensive, but it's not as expensive as you think. Currently, right now, this is our apparatus in Danville, as it sits. There, you'll notice there's three colors. There's red, yellow, and greens. Red is expired apparatus, fire apparatus replacement plan. Yellow is apparatus that needs to be replaced right now. And green is apparatus that's good, it's still within the range of our apparatus replacement plan. However, I want to highlight the green, not to make, not to be a downer. Within 365 days from today, that'll turn yellow. So it's, it's new, it's actually due to be replaced. So when we look at lease finance options, I met with several distributors, several apparatus manufacturers, and what I want to show you is the picture. That is a 2026 E1 75-foot ladder truck. That is a Kenworth 3,000 gallon tanker, and this is an E1 rescue pumper that will be built in 2027, and all of those have our names on them. And what do I mean by that? I went ahead and met with all the manufacturers, and we split together an option plan to see what it would cost to lease purchase these pieces of apparatus. So as you can see right here, these are the three pieces of equipment that we were talking about. The total equipment right now is $2,499, $630, and $0.35. Over a 15-year plan, over a 15-year payout, it breaks it down to $251,347. With a fire territory, that number for the apparatus replacement fund is very dual. The last thing, on the bottom slide that you'll see, we talked about replacing medics every five years. So if you look at a five, six, and seven year, you're, you're looking at a, a fund, it's down below, you won't be able to see it. The option one is actually $80,000, option two is $68,000, and option three is as low as $60,000. And I say as low as $60,000, because we're talking about millions of dollars of apparatus. But these millions of dollars of apparatus last 15 years, 10 to 15 years. Manufacturing costs, I spoke with two, two of the largest manufacturers, Pierce and E1, there's a shameless fund for both of them, hopefully they'll give us a bigger discount. That's a 45 increase in manufacturing costs since 2020. That averages to 11.25%. So nobody has to break your calculators out. I went in and did it for you. For the $2,946, $584, at 11.25%, every year that we wait, the price goes up. So what I wanted to highlight, remember when we did history and we talked about 1938 to 1950s? That gap that was in between there, that 15-year gap? Remember how it went up, $14,000? Our times have not changed. Our money is still increasing the longer we wait. So you will go from 2.9 million to 5, 5 million, 5,021,000. So it's incredible when you start seeing it in actual numbers. All these numbers are online, all these numbers are factual, and again, all these came from the actual manufacturers themselves. Capital improvement for fire stations, we're not going to get fire stations today, but I do want to share with you the data that we use for location. You're going to see a little area over here with like a bunch of little circles. So these are heat maps. Every incident that we do, I go in, and it automatically puts in longitude and latitude for every single run, 2,230 runs last year, and it puts it on a map. From there, I'm able to go in, I can analyze, and I can see the darker circles are the areas that we go to more often. The wider circles are maybe just one-off calls or, or a little bit different. The picture's not the best, but when you look at it on a big screen, it's absolutely amazing to see, and it's kind of neat, because we can show. So nothing that we do is because of just non-data. We're 100% data-driven. You will see, this is Station 192, Station 191, you will see this area in between. You will see, this is Station 192, Station 191, you will see this area in between, that is an overlap. I understand the overlap. But right now, if you look at 192s, which is the main station that is open, all this area right here, because of lack of staffing, is not being staff appropriate. Our future stations, again, are all database, everything's driven. So to summarize, staffing needs for shift, starting in 2025 is eight, going to 2029 is being 19 per shift. Apparatus needs, which are immediate, is into 192, ladder 191, the tanker. A medic is going to be separate, and it's almost immediate, we have that ready to go, and a battalion is easy because it's just a regular SUV that we staff. So that is not something that's going to be spent for a long-drawn-out piece. All the resource information you can find, if you want to take a picture of the screen here, or if it's provided with you with a QR code, you can go in and look, all the information that I provided you today is there. We also have a year-end report that depicts everything that we talked about, all the data, all of our run stats. We can tell you time of day, we can tell you the day of the week, we can tell you the most runs, we can tell you the least amount of runs. We track everything and every day, and we do that for data and statistics, providing you with the best information. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Reagan Ekins, I also have Nikki Bell with me. We're from Reedy Financial Group, we've worked with Mr. Bellamy several times on establishing fire territories. So we're going to talk a little bit about some of the financial data that went into this. We should be pulling up a document that'll have some graphs for us to kind of go over. Big picture here, I want to hit all of our charts and graphs, and kind of give a rundown of where they came from and what they mean. So start with our projected budget levy and rate. We work with Chief Duncan to get a budget for what they need to operate for the new fire territory. So that's $6.7 million, that's the budget that he needs. There's two funds when you establish a fire territory, your general fund, which has your operating expenses, salaries, benefits, all wages, your supplies, other services. The second fund is the equipment replacement fund that we just discussed, talking about replacing trucks and other apparatus. The general fund, we get to establish what our property tax levy is in our first year. The equipment replacement fund, that's a rate-driven fund, so that is based on whatever the AV is for the fire territory. It's limited to three and a third cents, cannot go higher than that. But if our AVs rise, which they have been doing historically in this area, then that levy would increase as well. So the difference between our budget and our levy and the general fund is, first of all, circuit breaker, which is our tax, property tax cap that we don't collect, and we have some ancillary revenues, C-VET, vehicle excise tax, and we also have factored in our EMS revenue, and then the potential for fire contract. Once we get our levy amounts, and then we use the area's assessed value to get our projected tax rate, and you see on the right for the general fund, our projected tax rate is .5030, and then that equipment replacement fund, .0333. We used, for our calculations, we assumed a 5% assessed value growth. This area has been seeing a higher AV growth the last few years, so we went conservative and used the 5% growth. The bottom right of that chart, the total tax rate would be just over 53 cents. And one thing I do want to note, that is not a brand-new rate. You are taking away what the current fire rate is and then adding this rate in. So for center township, I believe your rate is 47 cents currently for fire, so that would go away, and then this 53 would replace it. And then for the town of Danville, it's around 15 cents, so that would go away, and then the 53 cents would replace that. Going to the next page, talking about the taxpayer impacts. So we broke it down by the three taxing districts within the area. The top, the top graph is the monthly impact, the bottom one is the yearly impact, and we broke it down by the 1%, 2%, and 3% tax brackets, or the residential is 1%, agricultural is the 2%, and commercial is the 3%. So kind of going from left to right, you've got 1%, 2%, 3%, and then just for the sake of putting numbers together, we use some round number assessed values, and then show what the impact would be monthly and yearly. So for example, in the town of Danville, a $100,000 parcel that is residential would have a $9.89 increase on their tax bill per month, or $1.1869 for the full year. Anything that you see as blank has reached their tax cap, so they will not be affected. So for instance, a $250,000 house in any of these taxing districts, they're at their tax cap, so they will not see an increase. Anything in the 2% bucket, all the agricultural, that is capped as well. And then you will see some impact in the commercial. Let's just use center township, for example, a $200,000 assessed value commercial property in center township would see about a $10.59 monthly impact, or $1.27 impact, or 127 impact for a year. Moving on to overlapping units, impact, we'll start with circuit breaker. Circuit breaker is the amount of property tax that we don't collect. So these amounts are, you can kind of look at them as a negative number, this is how much of the property tax that will not be received. So we've got the units broken down on the left side, what their current fire circuit breaker is kind of in the middle, and the far right would be what would be projected in 2026. And the impacts are solely based on the projected tax rate of the fire territory expansion. Two big ones here, center township and Danville center town. Center township's only property tax levy right now is for the fire. So because they are no longer going to be responsible for fire, their property tax goes away, so they will not see any circuit breaker because they won't have property tax going directly to the township. And then Danville Civil Town, we'll see a significant increase, but if we go back to the first page, that $6.5 million tax levy, that's getting added to Danville because they are on pace to be the providing unit. So a good portion of that circuit breaker impact for them is because they are adding two new funds, the general fund for fire and the equipment replacement fund. And then the last, the last few are all related to local income tax. Local income tax will not go directly to the fire territory, the additional revenue will be received by the participating units. So there's a fire territory adjustment in the formula that the state uses to calculate income tax, and the fire territory adjustment allocates a part of the fire territory levy back to all the participating units. On our chart, you'll see every unit within Hendricks County. The two columns on the left is what their certified shares are for 2025, certified shares, property tax replacement, when you receive it, it usually comes together. And because of the way the local income tax distribution is done, you don't see the impact for another full year. So if the territory is established starting in 2026, you'd see an impact on the income taxes starting in 2027. So the two units participating are highlighted, center township, currently, 2025, estimated to receive a little over 800,000 in certified shares, and that will significantly increase, we're showing an increase of a little over $1 million by 2027 for their certified shares. And then Danville would be an increase of 882,000 right in that area. One thing to note, we are using a 5% growth on our local income tax bucket for the whole county. It's grown historically at a higher rate, I think 8% or 9% the last few years, we wanted to stay conservative in our projections. So if that income tax grows more or less, these numbers would be reflected differently. But this is using a 5% growth on that total income tax. And then the last page talks about a couple other local income tax. The first one, public safety, this is just for the county and the towns within the county. So Danville would receive approximately a $62,000 increase in their public safety. And then for economic development, they would see a little bit more of an impact, about $391,000 growth in their economic development. I think that's all I got.
Thanks to our two chiefs, and thanks to Reagan. Now we'll be, we'll do Q and A for any questions anybody has. I'll bring the baton around for anybody that wants to ask a question, we'll do our best try to get you to answer.
They need to go to the podium.
You need to go to the podium, I will not walk around, so I guess you can now, what is it? Come on in there. Mexican festival on fire territory. All right, here we've got somebody.
They're all on a QR code. If you are, people can walk around with confidence. Who am I addressing? So, crap. I just have a question, appreciate it. Craig Callahan. Appreciate the data that you shared, making decisions that way obviously is important. Question I have is, do you have data of projected runs or needs based on our growth west of town? We have approximately 1,000 homes going up west of the community. I sense there'll be an increased dark shaded area moving west, I could be wrong, I'm just curious if you had the stats or any projections in that.
There's really no way to project that, but what I can tell you on the basis, and we can't talk about it tonight, but the firehouse Station 191 where it's laid at with time, distance, travel, it covers that area all the way up to our actual coverage area of 200 west. Now, we do cover Marion Township under a contract, but that could go away at any time, so we base our firehouses on center township and the town of Danville. And we've got projected five firehouses at some point, our hungry lung dead when that happens, but it all depends on where the growth goes. If we start growing north, then we start going up north. If we're growing south, we go south. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, so it sounds like consideration for the growth.
Absolutely. He said it sounds like there's consideration for the growth, and that's absolutely, we're forecasting everything out as best we can. Anyone else? So in the budget, it has all the operating costs and everything associated, hang on a second. Okay. So we can't own property, the fire territory doesn't own property, so if that answers your question, the means and bullets, if you will, are territory and then everything else would be. Do you want to know what the difference, what the territory can and cannot have as far as what the possessions are? So the loose stuff is territory and the hard-to-stand stuff. And part of that, I'll try to be really brief, but under the fire territory, as we acquire this equipment, should this ever end, then it gets Debbie back up, so nobody's losing anything, right? If for whatever reason, this one entity decided to end this after its past, is that everything would go back to the proper people? So whatever money center put in, center would get either that money back or that piece of equipment, same way with the town, however it works out, it's all a big mathematical equation.
Any assets either unit brings to the arrangement? And for those of you that may have involvement with domestic relations, this may sound familiar, and I use those terms a lot, anybody that brings everything to the venture, takes it away if we still possess it, anything you acquire while you're together, you have to have like a business evaluation, or unfortunately, if a marital partnership breaks up, get a value, you find out what was in the pot, and you get someone like these gentlemen to say, well, this was your percentage contribution, this was your percentage contribution, and you either work out, one pays the other one out, or you take it out to the marketplace and liquidate, and you take your share and you take your share. But that's provided for in the code and in the agreements.
Mr. Disney, I've never turned my back on you ever once before, so I'm sorry about that.
It's quite all right. Got a couple speculative questions. Number one, the Indiana General Assembly is in session right now, and we hear property tax relief, property tax relief, property tax relief. What? I mean, we don't know what's going to happen, do we? These numbers that you put together could really be changed, is that correct upon what the General Assembly can do? And we don't know what they're going to do. Secondly, there's a bill moving through the, and I don't know just where it is, where the, going to do away with fire territories and put fire protection under the auspices of the county commissioners, is it Jim? Once again, do you have any theories for that?
Without getting out way on a limb, Jim, to say that that bill has got a reaction from the Ohio River to the Michigan line, I would say that would be a gross understatement. It would be one of, in your time of serving on the township board, it seems about every third Thursday there was a bill up about, you know, doing this or doing that in relation to reorganization of government. And what's somewhat persistent and nagging to some people's discomfort, and maybe others say it expresses the need, the calls for these gentlemen never go down. And the calls and the needs for Mr. Wright and then Mrs. White before him to come out and be what I call a second responder of those that are in, and even Beth deals with in her day job, of second response to other human suffering don't seem to go down. So I don't know until you solve the riddle of poverty and fire in this state that those demands go down. I have had those, not me, express many of the things that are proposed, not just those bills, as drastic. Let's say, though, there is some make-good on the things that are proposed, then these groups that in the time that they were in the position to do something, did something, and did what was within their grasp, which numerous communities have done, the legislature has handed them tools, and they have looked at the problems in their immediate community and said, we have got to have safe operators with safe equipment dealing with the calls of the citizens and their properties. So I think what you would see happen is if those things passed, these groups have to deal with the law as it stands. You can stand and wait to see what the General Assembly does, and wait another year, and another year, and another year, and what the chief and deputy chief of what you know is, roof's not going to stop leaking. No, it's going to continue to get worse. And I think for a community like yours, you know this, and others that have heard me tell it. And I think for a community like yours, you know this and others that have heard me tell it at length. 22 years ago, I was spinning fast, and this park wasn't great. And I was a planner in Marion County. And so I look at territories and this public safety aspect from a regional and public planning perspective. You guys particularly know, you're very attractive. You're very attractive for the next wave of ex-er suburb development. And the operated services, and I'm dealing with this right now in Pendleton, LaPelle, Markville, the area between Fishers and Anderson, and all these next suburban areas. And the demand is not going to increase. These builders want to build. We're being told we have shortage of housing. So I think that's kind of a long answer to, here's a short answer. I think you have to deal with, and these groups have to confront the problem with you now. And if the General Assembly says, no, you got to do it different, then I bless the commissioners. As if they don't have enough to do.
I'm not advocating that the commissioners take over the fire protection for Hendricks County in any way, shape, or form. I firmly believe that the best government is the Locust Government, and that's what's closest to people next to your town and township government. And county government, more than state. But anyway, we have to dish to their tune. Last thing is, let's say we establish a fire territory. What effect would it have on the other taxing units, which is the schools, libraries, et cetera?
Those impacts were shown on page two and three, two, three, and four of our report. One being the circuit breaker impact. You can see the taxing units there that will be impacted on circuit breaker, which is property taxes not collected. And then on pages three and four is the local income tax impact. So those would be the impacts on the overlapping units.
Thank you. Thank you. And I will tell you as your fire chief, in my opinion on the bill, about disbanding fire territories and making the entire county one fire department. I don't know how anybody in the world would ever do that in my lifetime, or yours. It's a logistical impossibility, in my opinion. This is my understanding, without saying any names, this comes up every session. Always somebody's got to fix for it. And even if you say we're going to cut property taxes, well, they're not cutting their salaries, but they want us to do more with less. Well, that's an overcome, but we're in trouble. And we need your support to get behind this. Because at the end of the day, we're doing this for you as the citizens. I'm not doing this for Rick Duncan. We're doing this for you, and I'm worried. Anyone else?
If you think of something on the drive home, or if you're like me, you think of something, cleaning up the basement, or pushing snow, or cutting grass, it's not going to cut grass for a while. We're going to do this again. We're going to do this again here in just a couple of weeks. I wouldn't set it down. When's our next date, guys? The night? Well, what's that, which picture it is? The 19th? 19th of February, and we're going to go to the town hall. Now, if you were riveted by this conversation, you just want to watch again, we're going to do up to the Q and A, the same presentation. And also too, if you think of something and you want to drop us a note, shoot something to Chief Duncan, and if he doesn't know, he'll get it out to us, and we'll try and get you some information. But that is the purpose of this. We're pushing out information. We want you guys to understand the need and then understand the result, you know, what you're achieving from this, and then some of the financial forecasting. So unless there's any other business, we can adjourn for the evening. Come back, do it all again at the next couple of sessions. And glad you were here. Appreciate you coming out brave and cold. Thanks, everybody, for your kind attention and the good questions.